That was me.
No, listen, you know, you're pretty damn good. Sheriff, there's only one sheriff. Whoops, I'll get this to come up. There we go. Okay, this chair is too low. It's weird. Come on, chair. Welcome, everybody. All right. Today, we're holding a hearing and bill signing for Intro 1362A. Intro 1362A bans the sale of flavored electronic cigarettes and flavored e-liquids in New York City, including mint, menthol, and wintergreen e-cigarettes and e-liquids. The simple idea behind the legislation today is that we will protect the health of all New Yorkers, especially our children. We will protect their health at any cost. And I want to commend the city council for their focus on this issue. And I know parents all over the city are deeply concerned that this be acted on and not tolerated, because we're seeing history repeat itself. The sad fact is, 60 years ago, Big Tobacco pulled the wool over the eyes of the American public, tried to convince young people that smoking was cool, tried to convince all of us that smoking was safe. This was a systematic effort to misinform in the name of profit. And so many thousands and thousands of Americans paid the price for that horrible effort to deceive in the name of the holy buck. That's what happened in this country. And we know that, we saw that history, we understood, we talked about it in this country for decades, how big corporations deceived us and hurt so many people, particularly hooked a generation of young people on tobacco. This was something talked about out in the open, and it was a cause for anger and frustration for years and years in this country. And yet, what do we see these companies doing today? The exact same thing. They are preying on our children. They're taking a page out of the playbook of Big Tobacco over a half-century ago, and they're literally running that play right now. And our children are the pawns in their very devious game. And once again, it is simply so a few people can make the biggest possible profit. We will not stand for that. And I want to thank the city council, stood up from the beginning. I'm going to turn to council member Mark Levine in a moment, but I want to single him out and thank him for tremendous focus on addressing this issue and showing that it can be addressed, which is really important. And people all over the city, people all over this country, particularly parents, are waiting to see some real action, and it's finally happening here in New York City. So, thank you, Mark. This is a man-made health crisis created by corporate America. The federal government has not acted. It could have and should have acted in the beginning. There should not have been a presumption that these products were safe, nor should there be for any new product. But unfortunately, the government hasn't acted. We will. New York City will act. If the federal government won't act, New York City will act. That's the simple message today. We are, of course, the largest city in the nation, and when the largest city in the nation bans non-tobacco-flavored e-cigarettes, it sends a message to everyone else that they can do it too. And that's how we end this crisis, and we protect our kids. A lot of times, the most important change happens from the grassroots, filters up to Washington DC. The nation's largest city leading the way is going to help to save a lot of lives, not only here, but other places as well. Lot of thanks to go around. Speaker Corey Johnson couldn't be with us, but I want to thank him for his leadership. I know he felt this issue and cared deeply that we act here. I mentioned our sheriff when I walked in the door, because a lot of New Yorkers don't know him, but Sheriff Joe Fasito does amazing work. And I hope more and more people will get to know you and the great work that you and your team do. And now, I want to turn to our doctor. And we all have one doctor in New York City. She's a very, very busy schedule. But the Health Commissioner of New York City is known to all New Yorkers as the ultimate voice when it comes to their health, their family's health, and regarded as a position that is a national voice on healthcare as well. So, I want to thank Dr. Oxiris Barbeau. She has, as our Health Commissioner, made a major, major priority of addressing the impact of tobacco itself and going even farther in our fight to stop the horrible losses that we have sustained because of the actions of Big Tobacco. But she knows that vaping is also a clear and present danger and needs to be addressed. Commissioner Barbeau.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you say, today is a momentous day for us, and it's a blow against Big Tobacco, and it's a big win for public health. City Council has been a staunch ally in this effort, and we are grateful for their support, and we're grateful for the support of all of the partners who have made today a reality. Many years ago, we saw the playbook that Big Tobacco had put in place in terms of getting generations of New Yorkers, of Americans, hooked on tobacco. We're seeing that same playbook being used when there is marketing of bubble gum, watermelon, and cotton candy to get children hooked on a lifetime of nicotine addiction. And so, today is an opportunity for us to block that action, because we cannot and will not let history repeat itself. And so, the steps that we are taking today promise a much healthier future for our city, and I am so pleased to be here by your side as you sign this.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. And now, again, special thanks to the Chair of the Health Committee and the sponsor of Intro 1362A. He has led the charge in the fight against Big Tobacco. He's led the charge to protect kids from e-cigarettes. He has always taken a very activist view of what government can do to protect people, and he's been particularly focused on the needs of our young people throughout his career. So, I want to thank you, council member. This is a very, very important day, and I want to thank you for your leadership, council member Mark Levine.
Well, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Your support and that of the First Lady from moment zero were so critical, as was that of Health Commissioner Dr. Barbeau. We had a united front here, and we needed it. We were up against some big opponents. This is an issue that could have and should have been settled by the federal government, and I'm really proud that New York City is acting in the face of that irresponsible inaction at the federal level, which is all the more frustrating, because we should have seen this coming. As both of you mentioned, the e-cigarette industry simply replayed the old tactics of Big Tobacco. They started with advertising that featured lots of young people having fun, making e-cigarettes look like a cool lifestyle choice. They moved on to a lobbying strategy that attempted to shut down any action by government to protect people. They hired no fewer than five lobbying firms in New York City. You probably heard from all five of them. I certainly did. And most dangerously, they rolled out their products in every fruity, menti, candyish flavor you can imagine. And tragically, all of that worked. And today, the estimate is that 5 million teenagers in this country are now locked in the grips of a nicotine addiction, a battle that they could be struggling with for their entire lives. And here in New York City, as nationally, the rates among young people, it's estimated 1 in 4 high school students and 1 in 10 middle school students have vaped. We had children at our hearing on this bill, as young as 11, who spoke about their avoidance of bathrooms in their middle schools, because they know that kids will be vaping there. They don't want the peer pressure. And, you know, we have been really conscious of those adults who have told us that, for them, vaping is a way to transition off cigarettes. I want to emphasize that the science on whether that is actually an effective strategy is far from conclusive, and the harm from e-cigarettes is clearly emerging, is being more serious, I think, than we even understood a year or two ago. But for those adults who do want that option, we have, we're going to continue to allow the sale of the e-cigarette device, as well as tobacco-flavored pods. That will still be legal in New York City. But at the end of the day, the estimate is that 3% to 4% of adults are vaping, and I cited the figures for kids, 1 in 4 high school students. Our priority as leaders in the city has to be to protect the health of young people, and that is what we are doing today. We're the first large, major city in America to do this, and when we do it here, Mr. Mayor, it reverberates nationally. And that is part of the reason why we face such pushback, because the opponents knew that we would be setting a national trend, and I'm proud we're doing that here. And I think that everyone up here will agree that this is not the end of our fight against nicotine addiction, against flavored tobacco products. This is a critical step, but we have more work to do, and the council's committed to that. I know you all are. Both you and the First Lady and the Commissioner have all mentioned that. You're committed to continue to battle flavored tobacco products in any form, and that work will continue. But that doesn't diminish the victory that we're celebrating today. I do just want to acknowledge some of the incredible activists, public health leaders who came together to make this possible. This was always a movement led by parents and young people, so Parents Against Vaping e-Cigarettes, PAVE, just some of the most amazing organizers I've had the pleasure to work with. Some of the many public health advocacy groups, including the American Heart Association, Robin Vitale has been an amazing partner, the American Cancer Society, Michael DeVoli, I think his bosses might be here, so I'm giving you an extra, extra great shout-out, because you've just been a wonderful policy leader here in New York City, Mike. The Campaign for Tobacco-Free Kids and their local leader, Andre Richardson, have just been amazing leaders on this. So many civil rights groups, the NAACP, Hazel Dukes was very outspoken on this, Minister Kirsten John Foy, Arch of Justice, also extremely outspoken, Smoke Free NYC, and many others. And also, I have to mention the health staff, who just worked so hard over so many years. Sarah List, over this year, Sarah List, Zaymen Yehl, Hailu, Emily Barkin, Lauren Hunt, my own staff, Amy Slattery, Wintup Roosevelt, Iya Keef. And another big shout-out to our Speaker Corey Johnson, who was deeply, personally invested in this, and we wouldn't be here if it weren't for him. Thank you for indulging me, Mr. Mayor, in those long remarks, and thank you for your partnership on this.
Absolutely, council member. Just before we turn to public testimony in a second, I'm going to turn to the sheriff, because I do think it's important. Wait, you're first, though, Commissioner, so. Just giving the sheriff his cue to get ready, because I do think it's important for people to understand why he's here and the work that he and his office does for a moment. But before that, I turn to the Commissioner. When the council member made the point about the fact that the virtues, quote-unquote, of e-cigarettes, far from proven, and I think, Commissioner, for everyone here, it would be important to just get a moment of your insight on that claim as we get ready to sign this legislation.
Sure. You know, I think it's important for us not to fall for the smoke and mirrors that e-cigarette companies want us to believe, that e-cigarettes are a tried-and-tested method for tobacco cessation. I think that, as councilman member, council member mentioned, the science on that is still developing. We want to see more studies that show us what not only the benefits are to e-cigarettes as potential cessation devices, but I think as importantly, if not more importantly, we need more longer-term studies on the negative health effects of e-cigarettes. Certainly, we know that when the heating element does liberate the vapor, that cancer-causing chemicals such as benzene formaldehyde are liberated. The other thing I would say is that we should not sort of lose sight of the fact that a cartridge of jewels, for example, has as much nicotine as a pack of cigarettes. And we need to also note that the tobacco industry has been very deliberate about the way in which this nicotine has been developed and the nicotine salts, so that they are ever more efficient at affecting the brains of adolescents. And so, the long-term effects of those potential harms, I think, outweigh any potential benefit that has yet to be vetted in terms of these devices being cessation devices. If, in fact, industry was interested in marketing them as cessation of devices, they should have and would have gone through the FDA process of being deemed safe as cessation devices. The other thing I would add is that we have data that documents through things such as the youth risk behavior surveillance. We have 45,000 children who are in, youth who are in high school that report using e-cigarettes. We have roughly another 14,000 middle schoolers, some as young as 11, that have reported using e-cigarettes. But I think a data point we don't talk enough about, which is important to the point about e-cigarettes as cessation devices, is that there are roughly 29,000 adult New Yorkers who never used tobacco in their lives, but initiated e-cigarette use through marketing of flavors such as coconut, such as jazz, as a concept flavor, and through marketing that made e-cigarette use look sexy and cool. And the reality is that it's not. It's a way in which more New Yorkers get hooked on nicotine and getting off of nicotine, especially through e-cigarette use. I don't think there is enough information to help us understand whether the existing cessation opportunities are as effective for e-cigarette users as they are for conventional tobacco users. So, thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Commissioner. Sheriff, just give us a moment, so everyone understands the role that you and your office play here.
So, the sheriff is kind of a combination of a court officer, police officer, tax enforcer. He does a lot of different things. And as far as our cigarette and e-cigarette enforcement component, we do many of the investigations that lead to civil actions. In particular, we did one with the Department of Consumer Affairs and the Law Department. There were individuals that were selling e-cigarettes to underage individuals in New York City. We supervise that investigation. We gather the evidence so that the Law Department can take legal action against them. And that's how we see our enforcement strategy to work going forward. We want to be able to seize the product. And it doesn't say we have to arrest everybody. Arrest is not always the answer to enforcement. Seizure is important, because it removes the product from the street. That's a safety issue. And then, holding the people that are selling the items accountable, that's enforcement. And we think that's a very, very strong way, sending the message that New York is not going to tolerate this type of activity.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Sheriff. Okay, we have public testimony now. We have six people signed up. I'm going to call up three at a time. Please go up to the microphone there by the door. First of all, Miracle Robinson, and Philip Furman, and then Caleb Mintz. Hey, there.
My name is Miracle Robinson, and I want to say thank you for signing the bill. I also want to give an acknowledgement to Shaniqul Charles, my mom, and to hear her more for helping on the bill, and that's all. And one more thing, the children of New York City will be safer now.
Good job.
Wow. There you go.
I have a question. How old is Miracle? How old are you, Miracle? 10 years old. Even better. Thank you, Miracle.
Thank you, Mayor de Blasio, Speaker Johnson, Councilman Levine, and the entire City Council of New York. Good afternoon. My name is Philip Furman, and I am 16 years old. I used my first mint jewel when I was 14 years old, at the end of 8th grade. At the time, I did not understand the dangers and the addictive natures of e-cigarettes and jewel. It soon became the new social norm. Everywhere I looked, kids were jeweling or using another kind of vape. It was very difficult for me to stop, and since then, I have been speaking out in hopes of protecting younger kids from beginning the use of flavored e-cigarette products. When I told my story at the City Council Committee hearing last January, I was encouraged that New York City might do something to protect kids from these devices. Today, we are so grateful to hear Council Member Mark Levine for proposing this e-cigarette bill, and to the entire City Council, and Mayor de Blasio for signing it into law today. This is really going to help fight against the teenage vaping epidemic, but it is not the end. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. My name is Caleb Mintz, and I cannot help but feel as if my generation will be defined by damage control from the youth vaping epidemic. The amount of times I have heard a peer express desire to quit is unbelievable. A teen who is focused on taking a standardized testing and getting into college has no business dealing with a nicotine addiction. I understand that protecting the generation below us from these harmful products is the priority, but I still hope something can be done to combat the rapid increase in nicotine addiction amongst teens. I hope the City Council will band together and soon ban all flavored tobacco products, including menthol cigarettes, which have been used by tobacco companies to hook minorities. We, as teens, should not be here, as tobacco products should not have been such a huge part of our lives. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Three more people for public testimony. Deirdre Sully, Quinton Tomlinson, and Andre Richardson.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Council Member, Health Commissioner, and Sheriff. My name is Deirdre Sully. I am the Director of NYC Smoke Free at Public Health Solutions. We work tirelessly to help underserved populations get the healthcare that they need and services that they need, and that includes tobacco control. NYC Smoke Free has been around for over 20 years doing this work, so this victory has been years in the making, and we thank everyone that was involved for coming to this day. Our partners at PAVE, Parents Against Vaping, and E-Sigs, our partners at the advocacy organizations, American Heart, American Lung Association, American Cancer Society, Tobacco-Free Kids. Andre, it's been a pleasure working with you, and I have to say, you know, thank you to the young kids that were also involved as advocates in this issue, and I will repeat, our work is not done. You're exactly right. As we've just heard, mint is a very popular flavor in the E-Sigs. So, this is a great thing that it's been included, and we have to continue to educate community members and New Yorkers about the dangers of mint and its effect on the African-American community when it comes to menthol cigarettes. But this is not diminished today, and we are really, really proud to be a part of this moment, and this is a great victory. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Quinton Tomlinson from East Flatbush Village, Inc., and it's a pleasure to be speaking with y'all today. I joined this coalition and the move against e-cigarettes and all of these other flavored tobacco jewels and everything else back in September, and it's been a pleasure working with Council Member Levine and all of the council members who supported the bill, and thank you to the mayor, who's supporting the bill today, as well as, as was mentioned earlier, there's harmful products within these jewel products, which contain tobacco, nicotine, but also contains aerosol, acrylon, which acrylon is a herbicide, primary use to kill weeds. That's not something we want to be inhaling in our bodies, first of all. As well as, it's a good thing that we're passing this bill today, because a bill was passed 10 years ago, basically on the same thing that was for flavored cigarettes, which is now this in another form, and it's a pleasure to get this out of the streets and away from our youth, because I, myself, I work with kids, I have many siblings, and I, on the bus, I listen to conversations, or if I'm not, it's my music, and I've heard kids talk about they're about to go home and use these products, and the different type of flavors it has, and what it can do for you to feel a certain type of way, a certain type of excitement. Like, that's not a good thing. We need to get this all out the way, as well as, as everyone else stated, the future generations, we don't want this to be a problem stemming down. We want to get the problem out of the way now, so they don't have to deal with this, and they don't have to face these type of problems growing up, because they, as someone said, standardized testing. You have tests, you have many other things that you have to worry about as you grow older, from elementary school, middle school, in your teenage years. We do not want a nicotine addiction to be one of them. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Andre Richardson. I'm the Campaign Manager for Flavor Hooks Kids. Mr. Mayor, I want to thank you for your leadership on this bill as well, to echo everyone else. Council Member Levine, thank you as well. Robin Vitale, Mike DeVoli, Kevin O'Flaherty, who's not here today. Quinton, thank you also for your leadership. Deirdre, thank you as well. We are a coalition of over 100 community groups throughout New York City, made up of churches, congregants, pastors, teachers, students, community groups, and nonprofits. You know, this is an amazing moment, and we have a lot of work to do today. We know the FDA recently came out with a study. Within the last two years, 5 million high school students have tried a jewel product, to the councilman's earlier point, kids as early as 11 and 12 years old. The problem with that is, we know that with nicotine and flavored products, it is easy to start smoking these products. It is incredibly difficult to quit, which is why we know this has become a national epidemic, and we're happy to see this epidemic being tackled here today in New York City, the greatest city in the world. As I said, an amazing first step. We have another bill, the Menthol Restriction Bill, which now has 37 co-sponsors, and we're looking to protect not only our kids, we're looking to protect African-Americans as well. For those of you who don't know, menthol is, menthol and heart disease is the number-one killer of African-Americans, not just in New York City, but nationally. There's amazing leadership being done here today. We're going to keep pushing. Once again, I want to thank the partners, and we're going to continue to build awareness and education around these two bills. Thank you again.
Thank you. Before I sign the legislation, a very brief summary in Spanish. Hoy prohibimos la venta de cigarros electrónicos de sabor. Las grandes tabaqueras saben el daño que las causan a nuestros jóvenes. Ponemos fin a esta crisis y protegemos a nuestros jóvenes. With that, gather round, anyone who wants to come up here for the signing. Council member, right here. Commissioner, sheriff, gather around. Everybody up here who wants to be up here? Mark, I'm going to help you by passing out some pens. Very elaborate, very elaborate procedure. Right down to the rest. All right, I got five more. Everyone who's using the pens, I haven't got any more. Do you need more of them?
I think we'll get about five.
Yeah. You can raise them. I can stretch it out. Keep going until we say we're done.
Does the pen not count unless you mark it? Does the pen not count unless you mark it? You have to mark it.
Very cynical about this. You actually have to leave ecom on the page, or it's like a cheat sheet. These pens actually had an impact on the signature. Okay, we're down to two pens. Are we ready?
Yes.
Just building that law. This hearing is now adjourned. Well done, everyone.